Please stand in their case and pledge allegiance.
Let's bow our heads, please. Dear my Father, thank you for allowing us to come together on this day, Lord. I just pray that you give us guidance and wisdom and help us to do the right thing, Lord, and may we know that if we seek you and your guidance, we know we will do the right thing. Bless all these people here, Lord, and may we continue to look to you for guidance. In your name we pray. Amen.
For the flag.
Karl Raul. Frank Baptist.
Here.
Kerry Murphy.
Here.
Jocelyn Cash.
Here.
Evelyn Reed.
Here.
Bill Donner.
Here.
Jeff Morrow.
Here.
Judd Hart.
Here.
James Hurstfeld.
Here.
Steve Lee.
Here.
Jeff Hamm.
Here.
Ten present.
Oh, at present, okay. You have the minutes before you. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
All in favor of approving last month's minutes?
Aye.
Please signify by saying aye. All right. Well, first I want to welcome you, and I'm glad you firemen got to come back to the event. They're all back, so Chief Ford. It's my great honor to tell you a little bit about the progress and where we're at in the State of the City address. 2018 was an exciting year. Even though the year ended with a few budgetary challenges, we're looking forward to facing these challenges and seizing the opportunities and moving forward with the city. The city saw several new businesses open in 2018: McLarty Nissan, Discount Tire, Freddie's Frozen Custard, and Red Robin. The economic growth we experienced last year resulted in a 5.15% increase in sales tax over the previous year in an amount of about $880,000. With the public and private partnership, the Farmers Market opened last spring of 2018. The first year of the market was very successful. I'm proud to announce the initial principal payment in June was made without a glitch. We anticipate another good year and hope to have even more events at the Farmers Market. As always, public safety is a top priority, as you can see as you look around our room filled with both the Fire Department and the Police Department. With that in mind, the Police Department purchased its body-worn cameras, four new police cars, and began expansion of the vault to hold the evidence. This was completed just about a month ago. The Fire Department also used public funds to purchase a $460,000 pumper truck. Several improvement projects were made in our Street Department, including the Shannon Oak Bridge, Hoover and Algood, Christie Acres, Montclair and Princeton. We also received approval from the Arkansas Department of Transportation to begin work on improvements in Congo and Long Hills, so that would get started hopefully this summer. Other Street Department projects in 2018, including drainage issues in Cedar Ridge and the completion of Alcoa Road. I'm pleased to announce that the Alcoa Road project finished ahead of schedule and under budget. New membership sponsorships and several new aquatic programs and an increase in sales tax revenue contributed to a very positive year for our Parks Department. The Aquatic Center added a timing system in water inflatables. The Tendal Park began work on an inclusive playground, which I'm proud to announce will have a ribbon cutting on the 31st of this month at 12:30. The first quarter of 2019 looks positive. The department head staff have worked diligently to keep their expenses under budget while still finding ways to accomplish city goals. This is impressive. Sales tax numbers look very encouraging after the first two months of 2019 with a 9.97 increase in revenue. The forecast for the city was 2.25%. So, we're going down the right road at this point. This year, we already had several projects lined up and many more ideas we're working on. We've made the commitment to do everything we can to re-visualize our downtown. To do this, we begin with the City Hall meeting and our Town Hall meeting here in February. During the meeting, the room was filled and we had over 75 people volunteer for different activities. Many of them are on the committees we have formed to begin the process and are working diligently now because together we can do more. We are working directly with Benton Chamber of Commerce and Gary James to ensure everyone's on the same page. As a matter of fact, March 30th, this Saturday, I am proud to announce we have five churches involved. One club here in town, the Lions Club, expect over 1,000 volunteers at 8:00 a.m. on March 30th to show up and clean up our streets, our neighborhoods, and areas in our town. We're very fortunate to have Tina as our Head of Marketing because she works diligently to bring people into the city of Benton to add to everything we do. She works directly with everything now that's involved in the city limits. We're working directly with Downtown Merchants to increase the attendance of the third Thursday event. The kickoff is April 18th and will take place on the third Thursday each month all the way through September. There will be a live band at the Farmers Market to kickoff, food trucks on River Street, and the stores will be open till 8:30. We're excited about the activities we have to offer the third Thursday of every month to bring more people into our historic downtown. We're also working with our local school districts planning the future growth for our city. We have partnered with them to provide the first Big Red Series baseball game to be held on April 6 between Benton and Bryant that'll be held right here in Benton, Arkansas on their new baseball field. We're going to treat it just like the softball with t-shirts and tickets being sold at the Big Red Stores. Hot dogs given away at the tailgate. We've got 40 vendors right now signed up to make the tailgate the first baseball tailgate and party in the state's history. Because we truly believe together we can do more, we're working with the County Judge and the Mayor of Bryant to ensure we provide opportunities for industry to come into our county. As a matter of fact, the three of us meet once a month to go over ideas and things we can do to lure in industry and businesses. Our economic team is working directly with the Celine County Economic Group to recruit new business to the area. The announcement of Curis Tech Corporation that was made a few weeks ago was a combined effort of Brad Jordan and Lamont Cornwell working together. We hope to make other announcements in the near future to the two of them working together to bring in industry. Our Parks Department continues to offer opportunities for our citizens to engage in many activities each month. I think I counted Stephanie and Senate Thing out, and there are 11 different activities that they're starting for next month already. They're working diligently to bring in tournaments to our city, which helps in our revenue. And they've partnered with the School District to attempt to bring in state tournament events to River Center. Our Police Department and Fire Department continue to move forward and maintain the highest level of protection for our citizens. They do this through their leadership, their guidance, but most of all, their dedication to our citizens. Our Street Department is fortunate to have a dependable staff that continually strives to keep everything up and running, filling the potholes as quickly as they brought to our attention. They're eager to work with their citizens and help with the problems. They know what needs to be done to improve the transportation issue. Matter of fact, within the near few months, they're going to start a sidewalk to connect North Street and go all the way in right behind Benton Middle School. Our Animal Control works hard every day. I know this because I get phone calls on them every day of what a great job they're doing. And in closing, I want to say the first three months of being in office has been an uplifting experience because we have a City Council, we have citizens, we have employees and department heads that care about our community, that want to offer the best for the citizens of Benton. We're very fortunate to have the people we have on our staff, to have in our department head positions because they work within their budgets, trying to save every penny they can, yet giving the citizens everything they can possibly given to them. We, the city, look forward to working with everyone to ensure that every citizen and visitor feels like this is home for them. We are proud of our past accomplishments, which are many, and we look forward to many more accomplishments for this year because together we can do more. At this time, I'm going to ask Tina to read a proclamation for autism, and I'll ask the Metta family to join me up here, please.
2019 World Autism Awareness Day and Autism Awareness Month proclamation. Whereas autism, the fastest-growing developmental disability in the United States affecting more than 3 million people, is an urgent public health crisis that demands a national response; and whereas autism is the result of a neurological disorder that can affect anyone regardless of race, ethnicity, gender, or socioeconomic background; and whereas symptoms and characteristics of autism may present themselves in a variety of combinations and can result in significant lifelong impairment of an individual's ability to learn, develop healthy interactive behaviors, and understand verbal as well as nonverbal communication; and whereas the effort to address autism continues, doctors, therapists, and educators can help persons with autism overcome or adjust to its challenges and provide early accurate diagnosis and the resulting appropriate education intervention and therapy that are vital to future growth and development; and whereas ensuring that persons living with autism have access to the lifelong care and services needed to pursue the full measure of personal happiness and achieve their greatest potential; and whereas the City of Benton, Arkansas, is honored to take part in the annual observance of Autism Awareness Month and World Autism Awareness Day in the hope that it will lead to a better understanding of the disorder; and therefore, Tom Farmer does hereby proclaim April 2019 as Autism Awareness Month and Tuesday, April 2, 2019, as World Autism Awareness Day in the City of Benton to raise public awareness of autism and the myriad of issues surrounding autism as well as to increase knowledge of the programs that have been and are being developed to support individuals with autism and their families.
All right. Thank you all. Thank you for being here so much. At this time, we're going to our service ward, and we'll start with the oldest and go to the youngest. So, William M. Ford, would you please come forward? We're recognizing him and what an accomplishment to serve 40 years. He started as a fireman in 1979. Gosh, I was barely out of school then. No, I'm just kidding.
Chief Bill Ford began his career with the Benton Fire Department on March 19, 1979, as a radio operator and is currently serving as our Fire Chief. Bill and his wife Judy have one son, Andrew, who keeps Bill on his toes. Bill enjoys spending time with his family and church family, fishing, hunting, and taking care of honeydews for Judy.
So, you'll be in front?
Yeah.
I'll say right.
Now, we need another fireman that began in 1989, 10 years after Chief Ford, Ernest Kopic. Kopic?
Yes. Come on back up.
Friday is Ernie's retirement reception, and it's going to be at 3:00 at the Senior Adult Center. I asked these, and I was not placing, so I couldn't get those. I'm getting the seniors off, which is the next best thing. So, at 3:00, come with us and have celebration. Celebration. Is that right?
That is right.
Do we want to read a little bit out, Ernie?
Yes.
Ernie Kopic will be completing 30 years of service with the Benton Fire Department on March 27 of this year and is currently serving as a fire engineer. Ernie and his wife Tina have six children and 15 grandchildren. He enjoys fishing, hunting, and spending time with his grandchildren. He also serves as a member of the Tall Volunteer Fire Department. Lastly, Ernie is retiring from the Benton Fire Department on March 29, and his retirement reception will be held on the 29th at 3:00 p.m.
Mandy and Cristiana, you want to join me for this next one? Would Jennifer Perry please come forward?
Jennifer Perry began her career with the City of Benton HR Payroll Department 20 years ago on March 29, 1999. Jennifer is an integral part of the HR team, ensuring everyone's payroll is processed correctly and in a timely manner. She is married to James and has two children, Jeremy, a Benton firefighter, and Jacob, an anesthesiologist. Jennifer has three grandchildren, loves to travel, loves the beach, and lighthouses.
My math's not real good, but that's 90, what is it? 90 years of experience with the city. That's fantastic. Thank you. We'll move on now to Resolution Number 25 of 2019. Do I have a motion?
Motion that we adopt Resolution 25 of 2019.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Would you? Please read.
Resolution 25 of 2019. The resolution ratifying and confirming the reappointment of Cheryl Childs as the city's representative to Celine County Regional Solid Waste Management Board and for other purposes. Whereas in accordance with the Arkansas Code, annotated Section 86703, the mayor desires to appoint Cheryl Childs as the representative of the City of Benton on the Celine County Regional Solid Waste Management Board. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Benton, Arkansas. Section 1, Cheryl Childs, who shall serve at the pleasure of the governing body, is hereby confirmed as the representative for the City of Benton to the Celine County Regional Solid Waste Management Board.
All right. Are there any comments from the public or the council on this? If not, take role, please.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Kerry Murphy.
Yes.
Jocelyn Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
James Hurstfeld.
Yes.
Steve Lee.
Yes.
Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Be ten yes.
Okay, the resolution is duly passed. Resolution Number 26 of 2019.
Make a motion to adopt Resolution 26 of 2019.
Second. We have a motion in a second, so would you please read the resolution?
Resolution 26 of 2019. A resolution authorizing the public display of fireworks at the Big Red Baseball Series between the Benton Panthers and the Bryant Hornets pursuant to ordinance 32 of 2013 and for other purposes. Whereas ordinance 32 of 2013 authorizes the use of fireworks within the city on certain days of the year and on days unauthorized by the Benton City Council. And whereas permission has been requested to have public display of fireworks at Everett Field at Panther Stadium for the first annual Big Red Series baseball game between the Benton Panthers and the Bryant Hornets, which will occur on Saturday, April 6, which is outside the days authorized for such an activity in ordinance 32 of 2013. And whereas the Benton City Council wishes to authorize this activity, which will be occurring at or around the athletic complex of the Benton School District. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Benton, Arkansas. Section 1, the City Council pursuant to ordinance 32 of 2013 does hereby authorize the public display of fireworks on Saturday, April 6, 2019, for the Big Red Baseball Series at Everett Field at the Panther Stadium Complex.
Okay. Hearing the resolutions, any comments from the public? Yes, ma'am.
I forgot to turn that around.
Oh, yes, I heard that this is fireworks, and my question is, is this going to, is it for all people in the city to shoot fireworks on that day?
No, ma'am.
How do you control it and it just be for where the activity's going to be?
Well, for one thing, it's illegal to sell them before then or shoot them, except at this one location.
Right, and I also have a problem with the fireworks being shot in neighborhoods because it seems like there are parts of the city that are safe and other citizens have to just try to do the best they can with what they have. You can't shoot them at hospitals, you can't shoot them near churches, you can't shoot them near schools, but other neighborhoods are just open game. And I'm really hoping that they will reverse these fireworks because I think I have shown the council here this thing that looked like a stick of dynamite that was at my doorstep, and I hope that Donner, Mr. Donner, would consider we need Benton to be safe. Safe is the law. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Comments from the council? Okay.
Kerry Murphy.
Yes.
Jocelyn Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
James Hurstfeld.
Yes.
Steve Lee.
Yes.
Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
All right, the resolution is duly passed. All right, we'll hear a report from the Finance Committee.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 27 of 2019.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Please read the Resolution 27 of 2019.
Resolution Number 27 of 2019. Resolution recognizing the services of Officer Joey Bedsall to the citizens of Benton and awarding him his badge in recognition of those services. Whereas Officer Joey Bedsall has served the citizens of Benton for 13 years as a police officer with the Police Department, and whereas Officer Bedsall has decided to leave his duty assignment for other opportunities; and whereas the city wishes to thank Officer Bedsall for his dedicated services to our community by presenting him with his badge in recognition of those outstanding services. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Benton, Arkansas, that section 1, the equipment listed on the attached document, Exhibit 1, is hereby declared surplus and shall be presented to Officer Joey Bedsall in recognition of his services to this community.
Any comments from the public? Comments from the council? Okay, can we take a vote, please?
Jocelyn Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
James Hurstfeld.
Yes.
Steve Lee.
Yes.
Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Kerry Murphy.
Yes.
Be ten yes.
All right, yes. The resolution is duly passed. Councilmember Cash?
Yes, I make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 28 of 2019.
We have a motion in a second to adopt Resolution 28 of 2019. Please read the resolution.
Resolution Number 28 of 2019. A resolution recognizing the services of Officer Chris Reynolds to the citizens of Benton and awarding him his badge and service weapon in recognition of those services. Whereas Officer Chris Reynolds has served the citizens of Benton for 16 years as a police officer with the Police Department; and whereas Officer Reynolds has decided to leave his duty assignment for other opportunities; and whereas the city wishes to thank Officer Reynolds for his dedicated services to our community by presenting him with his service weapon and badge in recognition of those outstanding services. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Benton, Arkansas, that section 1, the equipment listed on the attached document, Exhibit 1, is hereby declared surplus and shall be presented to Officer Chris Reynolds in recognition of his services to this community.
All right. Any comments from the public? Comments from the council? No, please take a vote.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
James Hurstfeld.
Yes.
Steve Lee.
Yes.
Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Kerry Murphy.
Yes.
Jocelyn Cash.
Yes.
Be ten yes.
All right, resolution is duly passed. Councilmember Cash, do you have any?
Yes, thank you for the reading of, I asked the mayor for a motion for the first reading of ordinance number 15 of 2019.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second for the reading of ordinance number 15 of 2019.
Ordinance Number 15 of 2019. An ordinance amending ordinance 59 of 2016, adjusting the pay rates for employees within the Police Department to clearing an emergency and for other purposes. Whereas the City of Benton recently conducted a review of compensation policies for the city's police officers due to the high rate of turnover within the department. And whereas after a review of those findings, the City Council desires to adopt a new salary scale for the Benton Police Department. Now therefore, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Benton, Arkansas, that section 1, the City of Benton does hereby adopt by reference Exhibit 1 of this ordinance as a salary scale for the Benton Police Department. The pay ranges contained therein, including all compensation incentives stated therein, shall constitute the salary pay ranges for this department. The pay ranges in any incentive programs for each job classification or job title are designated within the exhibit. Section 2, the compensation program stated in Exhibit 1 shall be in effect as of June 1, 2019. Section 3, wages for any employee who is presently being paid less than the pay under this new wage scale for his or her years of service shall be increased to the correct pay on the scale for their job classification. Should an employee currently be earning more than the compensation listed on the scale for his or her position under ordinance 59 of 2016, the compensation shall not be lowered so long as he or she remains in that job classification. On an employee's anniversary date, his or her salary shall be adjusted pursuant to the scale. Section 4, the City Council may make future adjustments to the scale based on the economic conditions of the city during the yearly budgetary process. Should a downward adjustment occur to the scale, no employee's current compensation shall be reduced as a direct result thereof. Future step increases may however be adjusted. Additionally, the City Council may by resolution freeze on a yearly basis any annual step increases should the economic conditions of the city warrant such action. Any such resolution shall state the reasons why the freeze is necessary. Any freeze instituted by the City Council will continue until the following year's budget is approved. The City Council shall review the economic conditions of the city each year, of the city's each budget year thereafter, and determine specifically by resolution whether or not the freeze shall continue and make factual findings as to why. If no such resolution is passed at the time the next year's budget is approved, the freeze shall be deemed lifted. Once a freeze is lifted, employee's compensation shall be increased to his or her current years of service. Section 5, all City of Benton ordinances, resolutions, employee personnel policies, and parts thereof in direct conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed to the extent of such direct conflict but not otherwise. Ordinance 59 of 2016 is hereby amended as of the effective date of this ordinance. Section 6, if any provision of this ordinance or the application thereof to any person or circumstances held invalid, such invalidity shall not affect the other provisions or applications of this ordinance, which can be given effect without the invalid provision or application, and to the extent the provisions of this ordinance are hereby declared to be severable. Section 7, there is an immediate need to amend and revise the employee wage scale for the City of Benton. Therefore, an emergency exists and this ordinance is necessary for the preservation of the public police health and safety. Subject to the effective date of June 1, 2019, it shall be in full force and effect immediately from and after its passage and approval.
All right. Any comments from the public? Comments from the council? Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, I'm Sam Chafin, and I'm here to just speak in support of the pay. I know back in October or November, we had one week that we lost six officers because of the pay opportunities somewhere else, and I know that turnover is a cost to the city. And we have one of the 10 best police departments in the state of Arkansas. We can be proud of that, and we are proud of our police. And they're one of the most visible, and of course, their lives are at stake each time that they get out, especially on Interstate 30. So, I just want to speak in favor of that, and I hope that you do vote for that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Comments from the council?
Yeah.
Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to suspend the rules. Please take a vote.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
James Hurstfeld.
Yes.
Steve Lee.
Yes.
Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Kerry Murphy.
Yes.
Jocelyn Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Be ten yes.
I make a motion that ordinance number 15 to be passed on the second and third reading.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Please read an ordinance by title only.
Ordinance Number 15 of 2019. An ordinance amending ordinance 59 of 2016, adjusting the pay rates for employees within the Police Department to clearing an emergency and for other purposes.
Okay. Any additional comments from the public? Comments from the council?
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
James Hurstfeld.
Yes.
Steve Lee.
Yes.
Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Jocelyn Cash?
Yes.
Evelyn Reed?
Yes.
Bill Donner?
Yes.
Ten yes.
All right.
I make a motion to pass the emergency clause.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to pass the emergency clause. Please take a vote.
Judd Hart?
Yes.
James Hertzfeld?
Yes.
Steve Lee?
Yes.
Jeff Ham?
Yes.
Frank Baptist?
Yes.
Carrie Murphy?
Yes.
Jocelyn Cash?
Yes.
Evelyn Reed?
Yes.
Bill Donner?
Yes.
Jeff Morrow?
Yes.
Ten yes.
All right, Ordinance 15 of 2009 has passed. Councilmember Cash, do you have anything else?
Yes, ask for the first reading of Ordinance Number 16 of 2019.
Second.
Ordinance Number 16 of 2019. An ordinance amending the 2019 budget for the General Fund as adopted in Ordinance One of 2019, authorizing the purchase of additional rescue equipment for the Fire Department, declaring an emergency and for other purposes. Whereas the City Council adopted the 2019 General Fund budget in Ordinance One of 2019, and whereas the city needs to amend the 2019 General Fund budget to appropriate funds for the purchase of additional rescue equipment for the Fire Department as set forth in Exhibit One to this ordinance. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Benton, Arkansas. Section One, pursuant to the authority granted in ACA Section 1458-202 and 1458-203, the City Council does hereby amend the fiscal year 2019 City of Benton budget as adopted in Ordinance One of 2019. The revised expenditures for the operations of the city are attached here too as Exhibit One to this ordinance and are more fully described therein. The adoption of this amendment shall be deemed as an appropriation pursuant to the foregoing statutes as well as any other applicable ordinance of the city. Section Two, the mayor is authorized to utilize the restricted funds in the Fire Department Rescue Fund for this purchase. Section Three, it is hereby found and determined there is an immediate need to amend the budget to appropriate funds as set forth herein, therefore an emergency exists and this ordinance is necessary for the preservation of the public peace, health, and safety, it shall be in full force and effect immediately from and after its passage and approval.
All right, any comments from the public? From the council?
I make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Please take a vote.
James Hertzfeld?
Yes.
Steve Lee?
Yes.
Jeff Ham?
Yes.
Frank Baptist?
Yes.
Carrie Murphy?
Yes.
Jocelyn Cash?
Yes.
Evelyn Reed?
Yes.
Bill Donner?
Yes.
Jeff Morrow?
Yes.
Judd Hart?
Yes.
Ten yes.
All right, Councilmember Cash, do you have any additional motion?
Yes, I ask that Ordinance Number 16 to be passed on the second and third readings.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass the ordinance on the second and third reading only by title.
Ordinance Number 16 of 2019. An ordinance amending the 2019 budget for the General Fund as adopted in Ordinance One of 2019, authorizing the purchase of additional rescue equipment for the Fire Department, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
Comments from the public? From the council?
Make a motion to pass the emergency clause.
Do we need a vote?
We got to take a vote.
Steve Lee?
Yes.
Jeff Ham?
Yes.
Frank Baptist?
Yes.
Carrie Murphy?
Yes.
Jocelyn Cash?
Yes.
Evelyn Reed?
Yes.
Bill Donner?
Yes.
Jeff Morrow?
Yes.
Judd Hart?
Yes.
James Hertzfeld?
Yes.
I make a motion to pass the emergency clause.
All right, we have a motion and a second to pass an emergency clause.
Jeff Ham?
Yes.
Frank Baptist?
Yes.
Carrie Murphy?
Yes.
Jocelyn Cash?
Yes.
Evelyn Reed?
Yes.
Bill Donner?
Yes.
Jeff Morrow?
Yes.
Judd Hart?
Yes.
James Hertzfeld?
Yes.
Steve Lee?
Yes.
Ten yes.
All right, Ordinance Number 16 of 2019 is duly passed. All right, Councilmember Reed, Community Service and Animal Control, motions or report?
Yes, make a motion to adopt Resolution 29 of 2019.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 29 of 2019. Please read the resolution.
Resolution 29 of 2019. A resolution authorizing the city to enter into a contract with powers of Arkansas to provide HVAC preventative maintenance services for the HVAC system for city-owned buildings at 220 West South Street and 210 Jefferson Street and for other purposes. Whereas the City of Benton has experienced numerous problems with component failure of HVAC units and is responsible to maintain such units, and their condition was poor due to the lack of ongoing preventative maintenance which had not been accomplished. The City of Benton hereby chooses to exercise and enter into a sole source agreement with powers of Arkansas as a recognized state cooperative contractor within the state approved TIPS process for use by public procurement units whereby compliance with competitive bid requirements and the Arkansas Procurement Code have been met. The city has an existing agreement for preventative maintenance services for City Hall through 2019 with powers of Arkansas. An addendum to this contract is needed to include the 220 West South Street and 210 Jefferson Street facilities HVAC units. And whereas powers of Arkansas currently provides preventative maintenance services at City Hall and has made repairs to units at the above-mentioned facilities, and the city is satisfied with these services and repairs. And whereas the city wishes to enter into this TIPS agreement with powers of Arkansas for the fiscal year 2019 to provide the needed maintenance services for these two properties. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Benton, Arkansas. Section One, the mayor and city clerk are hereby authorized to execute on behalf of the City of Benton in agreement with powers of Arkansas for providing preventative maintenance and repair services to the city on an as-needed basis for the properties listed above and as enumerated in the agreement.
Any comments from the public? From the council?
Alderman Hertzfeld?
Yes.
Alderman Lee?
Yes.
Jeff Ham?
Yes.
Frank Baptist? Carrie Murphy?
Yes.
Jocelyn Cash?
Yes.
Evelyn Reed?
Yes.
Bill Donner?
Yes.
Jeff Morrow?
Yes.
Judd Hart?
Yes.
All right, Resolution 29 of 2019 has duly passed. Councilmember Reed?
Make a motion that we adopt Resolution 30 of 2019.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number 30 of 2019. Please read the resolution.
Resolution 30 of 2019. A resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement with the United States Department of the Interior for operation and maintenance of the gauging station on the Saline River, appropriating the funds therefore and for other purposes. Whereas the City of Benton desires to enter into a joint funding agreement with the United States Department of the Interior for the operation and maintenance of the gauging station on the Saline River which serves as flood warning information station. And whereas the City of Benton desires to authorize the mayor and city clerk to undertake such action as is necessary for the city to renew this annual agreement and enter into such an agreement for 2019. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Benton, Arkansas that Section One, the City Council does hereby authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute any necessary documents and action as shall be necessary to enter into a joint funding agreement with the United States Department of the Interior for the operation and maintenance of the gauging station on the Saline River which serves as flood warning information station. Section Two, the funds required to be paid by the City of Benton in the joint funding agreement shall hereby be deemed appropriated.
Any comments from the public? From the council? Please take a vote.
Alderman Lee?
Yes.
Steve Lee, sorry. Jeff Ham?
Yes.
Frank Baptist?
Yes.
Carrie Murphy?
Yes.
Jocelyn Cash?
Yes.
Evelyn Reed?
Yes.
Bill Donner?
Yes.
Jeff Morrow?
Yes.
Judd Hart?
Yes.
James Hertzfeld?
Yes.
Ten yes.
Resolution Number 30 of 2019 has duly passed. Councilmember Reed?
Motion to adopt Resolution 31 of 2019.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number 31 of 2019. Please read the resolution.
Resolution Number 31 of 2019. A resolution supporting the Planning and Zoning Commission decision to use Metroplan to update the city's comprehensive development plan appropriating funds for this purpose and for other purposes. Whereas the Planning and Zoning Commission of the City of Benton is responsible for the creations of a comprehensive development plan for the city pursuant to ACA 1456-412. And whereas ACA 1456-410 authorizes the City Council to appropriate funds for the Planning and Zoning Commission to carry out its functions, and whereas the city's current comprehensive development plan is outdated, and whereas the Planning and Zoning Commission has elected to have Metroplan based in Little Rock oversee the creation of a new plan for the city, and whereas the City Council wishes to express its support of Planning and Zoning Commission's decision to use Metroplan and appropriate any needed funds for this purpose. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Benton, Arkansas that Section One, the City Council of the City of Benton hereby expresses its support of the Planning and Zoning Commission's decision to use Metroplan for the purpose of updating the city's comprehensive development plan. Any funds needed for holding public hearings, advertising notices, and other incidental costs for completing this study are hereby deemed appropriated.
All right, any comments from the public? From the council?
Mayor, how much did they estimate this is, that we're going to pay them to do this?
We're not paying them anything to do this. We pay an annual membership to Metroplan.
That's going to be included.
Now, there will be a little bit of cost possibly when we go out and do a public survey.
Okay.
Any other comments?
Jeff Ham?
Yes.
Frank Baptist?
Yes.
Carrie Murphy?
Yes.
Jocelyn Cash?
Yes.
Evelyn Reed?
Yes.
Bill Donner?
Yes.
Jeff Morrow?
Yes.
Judd Hart?
Yes.
James Hertzfeld?
Yes.
Steve Lee?
All right, Resolution Number 31 of 2019 has duly passed. Councilmember Reed?
Motion to have the first reading of Ordinance 17 of 2019.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the first reading of Ordinance 17 of 2019.
Ordinance 17 of 2019. An ordinance amending Ordinance 34 of 2013, which established the animal control regulations for the City of Benton, declaring an emergency and for other purposes. Whereas the City of Benton, Arkansas, in Ordinance 34 of 2019, established animal control regulations for the city, and whereas the City Council desires to create an exception for the required impounding of any police dog which bites a person while in the performance of his or her duties. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Benton, Arkansas. Section One, Section 11B of Ordinance 34 of 2013 shall be amended to read as follows. B, any animal that kills a person or inflicts serious wounds to a person, including but not limited to multiple bites, disfigurement, impairment of health, or impairment of any bodily function, and continues to exhibit behavior that is consistent with being vicious, shall be impounded by the animal control authority. However, any dog which is being utilized by a police agency operating within the City of Benton shall be exempt from impounding at the city's animal control facility because the dog is already under the control of a governmental unit. Section Two, it is hereby found and declared by the City of Benton that Ordinance 34 of 2013 needs to be clarified with respect to the responsibility of the Animal Control Department to house police dogs which may be subject to being impounded under the ordinance. Therefore, an emergency is hereby declared to exist, and this ordinance being necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, and safety shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval.
Any comments from the public? Yes, sir?
I would like from somebody, probably from the police department, to explain that.
Explain what, sir?
He had a police dog, you know, biting people and stuff. You know, what if he get out of control or something? What if, you know, you know, like my little puppy, he, certain people around him, he'll snag them in a minute. I don't know how to control them. Sometimes I control them, sometimes I don't. And I've seen in substance, you know, snagged them dogs go crazy sometime.
So what would you like for them to explain?
You know, what kind of control their dog's under, and who trains them, and what do they do? You know, I hadn't seen a police dog around here yet.
Wow. Chief Hodges, do you have someone back there that has a dog?
I have a couple canine dogs that might be answering questions. This is Officer Andrew Stovall.
Officer, please come up to the mic and tell us.
I'm Officer Andrew Stovall, previous canine handler. Our dogs are trained, we routinely train monthly with our dogs on a minimum set hours. We purchase our dogs from a company in Little Rock that sells police canine dogs, and they train. They come with a certain amount of hours trained from that particular company, and then we maintain our hours monthly.
And what are they trained to do?
It depends. Our dogs are dual-purpose. They're trained for apprehension and narcotics.
So if they're narcotics on a person in the house, he can find them, right?
Our dogs are not utilized to sniff a person.
Just a person?
Uh, do I?
What do the authorities do?
We do use them for narcotics, but we don't use them to actually go by and sniff a person for the narcotic side of it.
Okay. So would anybody report that at a certain rate or this or something that y'all bring the dogs out and what do you do?
It just depends on the circumstance. On vehicles, we can, yes. On houses where we're allowed to be there, then yes, we can.
So what about the no-not policy?
That falls under something else entirely.
That has nothing to do with K-9 dogs?
No. They're sacred. Them dogs should be turned loose on.
No, not necessarily. They've got to be under our control as a handler.
All right. Did I meet some of them dogs, see some of them dogs in action?
I can set that up if you'd like. I can use my card here.
All right, thank y'all. Counsel?
Mayor? Mayor, if I can, this, what had happened is that brought this ordinance up was that the police were apprehending somebody and it bit the criminal or whatever he was doing wrong, it bit him because it was detaining him. And then our animal control based on the ordinance came and requested to impound their police dog. And that's, you know, common sense, but it was in the ordinance and anyways, this just corrects that so that we don't take an officer doing its duty and put it in a dog pound. That's all.
Thank you.
Chief?
To clarify on that, that is correct. The dog was doing what it was trained to do and obeying its commands to bite.
All right, any other comments? Do we have an additional motion?
Yes, sir. This time make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Please take a vote.
Frank Baptist?
Yes.
Kerry Murphy?
Yes.
Jocelyn Cash?
Yes.
Evelyn Reed?
Yes.
Bill Donner?
Yes.
Jeff Morrow?
Yes.
Jed Hart?
Yes.
James Hertzfeld?
Yes.
Steve Lee?
Yes.
Jeff Ham?
Yes.
Would you like to make an additional motion?
Motion to adopt Ordinance 17 on the second and third reading by title only.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Ordinance 17 by the reading of the title only.
Ordinance Number 17 of 2019, an ordinance amending Ordinance 34 of 2013 which established the animal control regulations for the City of Benton declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
Any additional comments from the public? From the council?
Kerry Murphy?
Yes.
Jocelyn Cash?
Yes.
Evelyn Reed?
Yes.
Bill Donner?
Yes.
Jeff Morrow?
Yes.
Jed Hart?
Yes.
James Hertzfeld?
Yes.
Steve Lee?
Yes.
Jeff Ham?
Yes.
Frank Baptist?
Yes.
Kerry Murphy?
Yes.
Jocelyn Cash?
Yes.
Evelyn Reed?
Yes.
Bill Donner?
Yes.
Jeff Morrow?
Yes.
Jed Hart?
Yes.
James Hertzfeld?
Yes.
Steve Lee?
Yes.
Jeff Ham?
Yes.
Frank Baptist?
Yes.
And Kerry Murphy?
Yes.
Ordinance Number 17, 2019 duly passed. Councilmember Reed, anything else?
Motion to have first reading of Ordinance 18 of 2019, second.
We have a motion and a second to have the first reading, Ordinance Number 18 of 2019.
Ordinance Number 18 of 2019, an ordinance amending Ordinance 14 of 2017 which established the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Board of Adjustment for the City of Benton, amending ordinance 29 of 1964 modifying the number of commissioners who serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission declaring an emergency and for other purposes. Whereas, the City of Benton, Arkansas, in ordinance 14 of 2017 established the Board of Adjustment for the City Board. And whereas, the City of Benton, Arkansas, in ordinance 29 of 1964 established the Planning and Zoning Commission of the City Commission. And whereas, the City Council desires to combine the Board of Adjustment with the Planning and Zoning Commission pursuant to ACA 1456416. And whereas, as part of the consolidation of the two bodies, the City Council desires to increase the number of commissioners who serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission and set their terms of office. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Benton, Arkansas. Section one, section 3.009A of Ordinance 14 of 2017 shall be amended to read as follows. A, the Board of Adjustment shall consist of all of the members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. One, the Chair and Secretary of the Planning and Zoning Commission shall be the Chair and Secretary of the Board of Adjustment. The Board may adopt rules for conducting its business establishing a quorum and other procedures. The Board shall maintain a written public record of all findings and decisions. Two, meetings shall be at the call of the Chair and may take place in conjunction with meetings of the Commission. Each session of the Board shall be a public meeting with public notice of said meeting and business to be published in a newspaper of a general circulation in the City of Benton, Arkansas, one time seven days prior to the meeting. The public notice shall give a description of the property concerned along with an explanation of the appeal. Public notices shall be at the expense of the applicant. Section two, ordinance 29 of 1964 is hereby amended to state that the Planning and Zoning Commission of the City of Benton shall consist of nine members. The term of office for each member of the Commission shall be for five years. The ordinance shall not modify the expiration date of the term of office for those members of the Commission who are presently serving. When their present term of office expires, the new term of office for a subsequent appointment shall be for five years. Any person appointed to fill a vacancy which occurs before Commissioner's term of office expires shall serve the remainder of the original term of office. Unless otherwise stated herein, the appointment of the two new Commission positions created by this ordinance shall be filled in the manner specified in section three of ordinance 29 of 1964. The initial term of office for these two new Commission appointments shall be for three years for one appointment and five years for the other appointment. The mayor shall designate the term of office for each new Commission member at the time of the confirmation by the City Council. After the expiration of the initial term expires, the term of office for subsequent appointments shall be for five years as provided for in section one of this ordinance. The presently existing members of the Board of Adjustment who do not already serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission shall be appointed to the new Commissioner positions created herein. Section three, this ordinance amends ordinance 14 of 2017 and ordinance 29 of 1964. Any provision in ordinance 14 of 2017 and ordinance 29 of 1964 which is inconsistent with this ordinance is hereby repealed but not otherwise. Section four, it is hereby founded and declared by the City of Benton that ordinance 14 of 2017 and ordinance 29 of 1964 need to be amended to consolidate the Board of Adjustment with the Planning and Zoning Commission and to increase the membership therein. Therefore, an emergency is hereby declared to exist and this ordinance being necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, and safety shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval.
All right, do we have any comments from the public? From the council? Councilmember Reed?
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Please take a vote.
Evelyn Reed?
Yes.
Bill Donner?
Yes.
Jeff Morrow?
Yes.
Jed Hart?
Yes.
James Hertzfeld?
Yes.
Steve Lee?
Yes.
Jeff Ham?
Yes.
Frank Baptist?
Yes.
Kerry Murphy?
Yes.
Jocelyn Cash?
Yes.
Evelyn Reed?
Yes.
Bill Donner?
Yes.
Jeff Morrow?
Yes.
Jed Hart?
Yes.
James Hertzfeld?
Yes.
Steve Lee?
Yes.
Jeff Ham?
Yes.
Frank Baptist?
Yes.
Kerry Murphy?
Yes.
Jocelyn Cash?
Yes.
Evelyn Reed?
Yes.
Bill Donner?
Yes.
Jeff Morrow?
Yes.
Jed Hart?
Yes.
James Hertzfeld?
Yes.
Steve Lee?
Yes.
Jeff Ham?
Yes.
Frank Baptist?
Yes.
Kerry Murphy?
Yes.
Jocelyn Cash?
Yes.
Evelyn Reed?
Yes.
Bill Donner?
Yes.
Jeff Morrow?
Yes.
James Hertzfeld?
Yes.
Steve Lee?
Yes.
Jeff Ham?
Yes.
Frank Baptist?
Yes.
Kerry Murphy?
Yes.
Jocelyn Cash?
Yes.
Evelyn Reed?
Yes.
Bill Donner?
Yes.
James Hertzfeld?
Yes.
Steve Lee?
Yes.
Jeff Ham?
Yes.
Frank Baptist?
Yes.
Kerry Murphy?
Yes.
Jocelyn Cash?
Yes.
Evelyn Reed?
Yes.
Bill Donner?
Yes.
James Hertzfeld?
Yes.
Steve Lee?
Yes.
Jeff Ham?
Yes.
Frank Baptist?
Yes.
Kerry Murphy?
Yes.
Jocelyn Cash?
Yes.
Evelyn Reed?
Yes.
Bill Donner?
Yes.
Jeff Morrow?
Yes.
Jed Hart?
Yes.
James Hertzfeld?
Yes.
Steve Lee?
Yes.
Jeff Ham?
Yes.
Frank Baptist?
Yes.
Kerry Murphy?
Yes.
Jocelyn Cash?
Yes.
Evelyn Reed?
Yes.
Bill Donner?
Yes.
Jeff Morrow?
Yes.
Jed Hart?
Yes.
James Hertzfeld?
Yes.
Steve Lee?
Yes.
Jeff Ham?
Yes.
Frank Baptist?
Yes.
Kerry Murphy?
Yes.
Jocelyn Cash?
Yes.
Evelyn Reed?
Yes.
Bill Donner?
Yes.
Jeff Morrow?
Yes.
Resolution Number 32, 2019 has duly passed. Councilmember Reed, do you have anything else?
Yes, make a motion to adopt Resolution 33 of 2019.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number 33 of 2019. Please read the resolution.
Resolution Number 33 of 2019, a resolution appointing Mark Chilton to the City of Benton Planning and Zoning Commission and for other purposes. Whereas, the City of Benton created the City of Benton Planning and Zoning Commission by ordinance 29 of 1964. And whereas, the term of office for Mark Chilton shall be for an initial term of five years and will expire on January 1st, 2024. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Benton, Arkansas. Section one, Mark Chilton is confirmed as a member of the City of Benton Planning and Zoning Commission. His term of office will expire January 1st, 2024.
Any comments from the public? From the council? Please take a vote.
James Hertzfeld?
Yes.
Steve Lee?
Yes.
Jeff Ham?
Yes.
Frank Baptist?
Yes.
Kerry Murphy?
Yes.
Jocelyn Cash?
Yes.
Evelyn Reed?
Yes.
Bill Donner?
Yes.
Jeff Morrow?
Yes.
Jed Hart?
Yes.
Resolution Number 33 of 2019 has duly passed. Councilmember Reed, do you have anything else?
Just that the Community Service Animal Control Committee meeting will meet April the 2nd at 6:00.
April 2nd at 6:00. Okay. Councilmember Ham, do you have anything on the street and drainage?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the adoption of Resolution 34 of 2019.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 34 of 2019. Please read the resolution.
Resolution Number 34 of 2019, a resolution abandoning a section of the city's street right-of-way pursuant to ACA 1431112 located along First Street in the City of Benton and for other purposes. Whereas, pursuant to ACA 14301112, the City Council may enter into an agreement with all the adjacent property owners to a passageway in order to abandon it and transfer ownership of the land to them. And whereas, the City Council has determined that an unused section of First Street is a passageway within the city whose abandonment will enhance and promote the welfare of the city under the above statute. And whereas, the city has determined that there are not any utilities in the area which will be affected by the abandonment of the area. And whereas, after consideration of the petition to abandon the herein described right-of-way, the city agrees to transfer its interest to the property, in the property to the adjacent property owner. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Benton, Arkansas. Section one, pursuant to ACA 14301112, the City of Benton does hereby authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement for the transfer of a passageway more fully described in Exhibit One to this resolution. The city attorney shall approve the agreement prior to its execution. The mayor and city clerk are also authorized to execute any documents of title necessary to complete the agreement.
Any comments from the public? Comments from the council?